Ladies and gentlemen, if we could come to order, we'll get our meeting started. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. I would like to call to order the study session for the City Council for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for March 2nd, 2020. I would like to start our meeting off, as we do most of our meetings, with citizen comment on agenda items. I don't have anyone signed up to speak tonight. Is there anyone here who is not signed up who would like to speak on one of the agenda items on our agenda? That's where the agenda items are located. All right, I don't see anyone, so we will go right into our, right into our agenda. Our first order of business is the 2020 Annual Legislative Forum. Morgan, if you'd like to join us, and is Mary Ann going to join us?
Yeah.
Okay, Mary Ann is going to join us. Morgan, please. Monica?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we're, thank you. Thank you for joining us. We are really pleased tonight to have our state representative with District 24, Representative Monica Duran, joining us. Monica was, Representative Duran was elected to the House District 24 in 2018. She served on the Wheat Ridge City Council, right here, and beginning in 2015. She's also been a director of the Wheat Ridge Fire Protection Board, a board member for the Jefferson Center for Mental Health, on the Wheat Ridge Planning Commission, and various other community organizations in Wheat Ridge. She is married with four grown sons and lives not a stone's throw away here from our municipal building in Wheat Ridge. So Representative Duran, thank you very much for joining us tonight. It's a pleasure to have you.
Well, thank you, Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here and sitting in my old seat.
All right. That sounds very good. And I, we were a little free-form tonight, so I'd like to turn the, turn the mic over to you if you'd like to tell us what's going on down under the Golden Dome.
Great, thank you. I also want to add a brand-new granddaughter who's now seven months old.
Well, congratulations to you. Very, very nice.
So what I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, is I printed out, so far, all the bills that have been introduced this session from the House and the Senate, in case anybody wanted to take a look. If we could pass those out, or I can go this way? Okay, we'll go this way. Also, one more thing, so I don't forget. There is House District 24 Day that I will be hosting on March 24th, so if anyone's interested, wants to come and hang out for a little bit, or all day, if we could pass that out, that would be great, too. Thank you. So it's been a busy session so far. I've had a couple of late nights where we've been there until 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, you know, kind of listening to testimony and doing the people's work, so it's been great and exciting. So what I thought I would do is just kind of read off a few things that I'm working on, and then I'd really love to hear from all of you, things that you're looking at locally or want me to pay attention to while I'm at the Capitol. So, let's see here. I've had a few bills that have already passed out of the House and the Senate and are getting ready for the governor's signature, and one is ID of veteran remains. And what that basically is, is there, we discovered there were quite a few veterans who, the remains had not been claimed and had been sitting in mortuary areas. So I had an organization that reached out and said, "Look, we would like to give them the proper burial that they deserve." And, you know, as being an Air Force brat and a brother who went to West Point, I understand the importance of that proper burial. So that bill passed out, and that's getting ready to be signed. Another one is the reorganization of the Dental Practice Act. Most of you might know that my background is in the dental field, so it was just kind of reorganizing some of that information to make it easier to access. The other one that is, I'm waiting to get, it's been heard and introduced, it's driving instructions for foster children, because foster youth don't have the same opportunities that most of us have had in getting a driver's permit. So we kind of looked to see a way that we could create a grant program, or just a program period that would allow them to be able to do it. So we got that bill done, got it out of committee, and now we're just waiting to get to the House floor. So that's a great bill I'm excited about. Another one that didn't quite make it out of committee that I was passionate about was the stopping of puppy mills, of commercial puppy mill breeders. So that was a great bill, excited to have worked on that, and will continue to work on that next year. Let's see here. There's one that will be coming up, actually has come up, will be coming back to committee, in its protection orders issued against domestic violence abusers. And that was actually a law that was passed in 2013. And what I found when I went back to look at the implementation is that counties weren't implementing that, and I wanted to know why. And the reason why, they said, is they clearly didn't have a path forward as to who is responsible for what. So I've been working on it for almost a year, figuring out that path, meeting with DAs, sheriff's departments, all stakeholders, to figure out how we can move that forward. So we're this close to getting it out of committee. We'll get it into seconds, and we've got a lot of support on that one. The next bill, there's several, but I'm just going to go through a couple. The next one is called, It's Safe at Gun Storage. And that has been something I've been working on for a year also, and been working with all police department sheriffs, just getting input as to how we can make that an educational piece, more than really anything else. So we're really close to getting that introduced this week, and really excited to be working with different organizations on both sides to get this passed and get it moved forward. So we've got, let me see here. I'm also working on, let's see, increased medical providers for senior citizens, which is a bill that's starting in the Senate. So this would actually kind of allow senior citizens who are in need of extra health care, and we're trying to work in dental care in there, for them to be able to access more benefits that way. So we're really, there is so much work that's going on between the House and the Senate, and, you know, trying to figure out our path forward with different things that we're doing, but really excited to kind of pull in some bipartisan support on a lot of these bills, and work together on both sides of the aisle to see how we can accomplish things, and really just kind of listening, listening to you. You know, I have town halls here in Wheat Ridge, and then in Golden, and really want to kind of hear locally what's going on, and what concerns you have, or any bills that might affect us here locally, what, you know, what I can do. So that's just kind of a quick synopsis of what's going on, and I'm open for questions, too.
Terrific. Thank you very much, Representative. We'll open the floor up for questions from Council of our Representative, Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Representative Duran. I was just wondering if, in the stuff that you're working on, has there been anything that, kind of towards moving, moving towards finding some more support for, like, the homeless population in Colorado? The county has hired a homelessness coordinator, and all the municipalities in Jeffco have hired homeless coordinators to work as, as a county and as municipalities, as a team. And so I'm just wondering if there's anything that's going on that, that you know of, that you can share with us today about that issue.
I know that we're having lots of conversations to figure out what can we do, what can we do, or ask, you know, our local governments to do, but what can we do as a state? I haven't specifically heard of any type of legislation unless, you know, if it started in the Senate, I'm not sure yet, but there are conversations we're having. I'm also, I also co-chair the Children's Caucus, and we just had a great speaker that came this last week, and he talked about a project up in Boulder where they created housing for homeless teens, because that, teens, it's a high population of homeless teenagers. So it was a great concept, so I asked him if he was working with any other municipalities around, specifically Wheat Ridge, and they're having conversations, but not specifically here. But I thought the concept and idea was great as to what they were doing. So the conversations are taking place, and we are really trying to figure out what we can do and how we can work together between the state and locally to address that.
Additionally, House Bill 1233, which was, it's the basic, this year it's called the Basic Life Functions Act, but it's a perennial bill that comes up every session. It's also been called the Right to Rest Act, that imposes camping bans on local governments. And that was defeated last week. So, a homeless-related issue that was, was introduced.
Ms. Hoppe?
Thank you for that information. Do you mind introducing yourself for that?
Let me, let me go ahead and do that. I haven't done that yet. Please let me introduce, Morgan, Morgan Cullen is the, is with CML, Legislative Policy Advocate for CML. His, he specializes in transportation and transit issues, sustainability, economic development, and TIF, municipal debt and finance, purchasing and utilities. And Mr. Cullen, we're happy to have you with us tonight.
Thank you very much. Sorry. Thank you very much. Yeah, so, a number of the issues that CML's been working on, and I've got some handouts for you as well. One is just our municipal policy statement, and that's really kind of just the general framework as a guiding document, if you will, that all of our municipal members from all 270 municipalities across the state put together. And that really helps us to determine what positions we are going to take down at the State House. And then we also have our legislative priorities, and we update this every year, and it's just the key priorities that CML will be working on down at the State House as it relates to any particular legislative session. And then finally, we've got a, I've got, sorry, here, a bunch of our, just our box scores. So these are all the bills that CML has taken an active position on to date. And I can kind of just give you a brief overview of some of the highlights. I'm just one of four lobbyists, though, so I, I cover, I know my issues fairly well, at least I think I do, but there's three other lobbyists, and so I'll try and cover their, their issues as best I can. But if you have additional questions that I can't answer, I'll be happy to follow up on that. So, transportation funding, I'll just begin with that, because it's always a perennial issue, and it will be until we can figure out some sort of a long-term statewide funding strategy that will help to support infrastructure funding across the state. Long story, short, the 22 cent a gallon gas tax hasn't increased since 1991, and so it's creating a systemic problem at every level of government, including municipal revenue. More and more municipalities now are having to take money from their general funds to help cover basic maintenance costs for their roads and bridges within their municipalities, because the gas tax through the HUTF tax fund isn't providing the needed revenue in order to do so. There's been a variety of different proposals that have been put forward, but no real funding bills to date. A number of the proposals have to do with indexing the gas tax, increasing or imposing a gas fee, a referred measure to increase the gas tax, a road usage fee, fees on electric vehicles. There actually was one bill that was introduced that's, has been PI'd in the Senate, Senator Priola sponsored. And then there's another bill, House Bill 1151, that was supposed to be scheduled for this Wednesday on the House Transportation Committee, but I think it's going to get laid over for another week. And that would allow transportation planning organizations, such as, like Dr. Cog, for example, to really operate as a regional transportation authority for all extensive purposes, and allow taxing authority and the ability to put forward a referred measure for voters to approve, to help support regional infrastructure funding within their political jurisdiction. And that bill, you know, we typically support those types of bills, regional transportation funding, local options for transportation. We supported a regional transportation, reauthorization of the RTA bill in 2017. But we're kind of seeing this bill and a number of our members across the state as really kind of like a nuclear option. And the problem is, is that if municipalities with the large, you know, large populations, large tax base, decide to move down, move in the direction of funding at the local level, they're much less likely to approve anything at the state level, which is going to leave the smaller population, small, smaller tax base, cities, towns, counties across the state with no other option to help support their transportation needs. And so that's kind of the big challenge there, and it's a big challenge for the bill sponsors as well. They understand it. And I think everybody really wants to have a, figure out a statewide solution for this problem, but they're not quite sure how to, how to do it, given the taper restrictions that are in place. Another Senate Bill 65, the distracted driving bill, is always a big issue, texting while driving. This bill is actually getting bipartisan support, just passed third reading in the Senate on Friday, and it'll be introduced into the House sometime this week. And I think it really comes down to the committee assignment. The bill is, the last couple of years, has been assigned to House Judiciary and has been PI'd. The racial profiling issues that have been raised during those hearings have been what has killed the bill. And so if that bill goes to Judiciary again, I suspect it to run into the same challenges. If it goes to House Transportation, though, I think it may have a fair shot. And if it gets to the floor, I think it'd pass. So. And then our regulation of plastic products is something that has gotten a lot of coverage. There's two bills in the House right now, 1162 and 1163. One, 1162 bans food-grade polystyrene at restaurants. 1163 bans a number of different plastic bags, straws, stirs, and also imposes a 10-cent fee. We've had some challenges, we have some challenges with that bill. We've gotten some additional local kind of control language in there. But the bill that we were really working on was Senate Bill 10, that was PI'd a few weeks ago, and that would have removed the state preemption on local prohibitions of plastic products. Right now municipalities aren't allowed, they're statutorily not allowed to regulate products at the local level, and so this is very much a local control issue for us. And we're working on trying to get that bill reintroduced this What else do we got? Tobacco products, House Bill 1001 would impose a 20-year, age 21 age restriction on vaping products, and that bill, I think, should pass, no problem. And then there's a, another bill, 1319, that would ban flavored tobacco products, and I think that one's having a bit more difficulty.
These would preempt local control?
It would create a statewide standard. There's a number, it's kind of like the Colorado, a great example's back in 2008, 2006, the General Assembly passed the Colorado Clean Indoor Air Act that would, you know, that basically banned smoking in bars and restaurants. And the reason for that is you had a number of municipalities across the state who were responding to the will of their constituents and saying, "We need to, you know, we don't want to have to be breathing smoke indoors in public places." And so what did you, we started to see a number of different kinds of ordinances across the state. What the Clean Indoor Air Act did was it created a statewide floor to deal with it, but it allowed municipalities to be more restrictive than, than what that, that standard was. And I think the same is true for, for these, for these, for these bills as well.
Can I just say, or ask you, on the vaping, it's all flavored vaping and flavored tobacco, correct? And that bill is what they want to ban?
I believe so. This, it's not my bill, though.
Well, not your bill, but I just mean, that's what I've heard. The bill is banning flavors, not just in vaping, but also in tobacco.
Yeah. And I'm just saying, I'm not sure, because it's, I'm not the lobbyist that handles the tobacco.
Okay. I remember talking to them yesterday, so. Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Morgan, do you know the, about the licensing piece of this, or they, they're proposing a dual licensing system? Do you know, do you know much about that piece?
I don't, I don't know much about it. I do know that there is a dual licensing component to it, though.
Okay. With the state and the local both have to have a license in place, and the state would dictate that process?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I can have Brandy follow up with that.
Okay, okay. Because we're, we're looking at, as Council knows, drafting an ordinance to also do very similar things. So we, we put that on hold, if Council understands a little bit, until we figure out what the state's going to do, so we don't have to go back and change anything. If the state sees that this is a statewide concern, we may have to change the ordinance, so.
And then one bill that Megan's working on right now is the, it's called the Colorado Rights Act. Right now municipalities can be held liable for any infringement on civil rights, and this would expand that to any perceived violation of state constitutional rights. So obviously it opened, opens up municipalities to massive legal exposure and could be incredibly expensive for municipalities. So CML is opposing that bill, and we believe it will not pass. I believe it's up next week. So. 1287, yeah.
And you don't think it's going to pass at this point?
No. It's, it reminds me a lot of, if you recall, Amendment 74, that we were, I know we were going to every city in the state screaming about it, and it's that kind of liability exposure that we're worried about.
Yes. Councilor Beck?
Thanks. I think this is a question for Morgan, but probably Representative Duran, if you have any insights, too. So, we are about to experience a bunch of cuts to our RTD services and our routes, because we don't have, at least what we've been told so far is that there's, there's shortages in operators. And I'm just wondering if there's any, anything in the works. I just took a quick gander at, like, what's, what's coming up, and it doesn't look like there's anything that deals with that transportation issue. And I also think there's probably some opportunity in some workforce training or something for operators. These, these cuts are specifically in Wheat Ridge, going to impact one of the main routes to Wheat Ridge High School. And I know a few members that I've talked to of the council are really concerned about what's going to happen. So just at a, at a, what we can do from a legislative perspective to raise this issue would be really important. And maybe there, Morgan, with the work that you do at the regional level on transportation, if there's anything that we can try and slip into any bills, that would be awesome.
So I do know Senate Bill 151, which being carried by Senator Tate, has, will be up, I believe, tomorrow. CML hasn't taken a position on it, and we typically, we don't get involved in regional issues unless it's, you know, major concern, so it's very, this is really good feedback. And I know that a number of municipalities have some, it changes a bunch of the administrative functions of RTD to try and help to, you know, create some sort of financial stability. It allows for commercial and retail sales at RTD locations, so I think it's trying to find another funding mechanism. And, and then there's also a part in Section 2 of the bill that I know a number of municipalities have concerns about. It opens up legal exposure to lawsuits for any perceived violation of persons with disabilities. And so I think that there's a number of municipalities that are saying, "Well, look, this, we're trying to bring legislation to help make sure that RTD is financially solvent, and this is just going to add another, you know, potential financial liability onto the, the rolls," and isn't actually going to help with that specific purpose. So I think there's been some, some push to try and remove that part of the legislation. I didn't, I don't know of any specific pieces in the bill that, you know, directly impact or provide additional funding for personnel, but I think they are looking at trying to make some administrative changes to help kind of deal with some of those surrounding issues.
Mr. Duran?
Thank you. I was just going to add, we are having those conversations. I know it's a tough, it's a tough path, trying to figure out how do we move forward and what can we do, and can we be creative. So that's what we're trying to figure out, is how creative we can be. And I see that the bill is here, and it's starting up in the Senate, you mentioned. I'm happy to share this with you. I could just send it to you, and you can read it if you'd like?
That would be fabulous. Thank you.
Okay, great. I'll do that.
And if, if you ever need any context or anybody to come up and speak to this issue, you know, I'd be happy to come, or you can find some, some folks.
Great, thank you. That always helps.
Thank you. Additional legislative issues that we want to talk about. I have one that sort of pertains to Wheat Ridge. It, I believe, is HB 1129. It's about battery-charged electric fences. And Morgan, you're not on that. Are you familiar with this?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Goff, you, you had some experience with this bill?
I'm not sure if I have any experience with it, but I, we've been told, and maybe for the new, newer members on Council, and Morgan probably doesn't even know this either, but we've been told that this may pertain to an issue in Wheat Ridge. A couple of years ago, a company out of South Carolina, Guard, Guard Dog, Bulldog, Guard Dog?
Electric.
Electric Guard Dog was working for a client, and we urged Kettleson campers over off the frontage road, and they wanted to put up electric fence around their, their lot for, for security reasons. They were having some public safety issues, and, and our code didn't specifically allow it, so we kind of had to go through a process to, to amend the code to allow it, which we eventually did. You know, that site's right next to an elementary school. The school wasn't real happy with having an electric fence right next to their, their kiddos. So it was a process, and I'm assuming, we were told that there was a company out of South Carolina that was, that was pushing this bill. So we're assuming that's who it was, and, and because of Wheat Ridge, probably, so, which is, and the bill would require that electric fences would be allowed statewide in any zone district except residential. So pretty overreach, in my mind, that the state's going to be telling local municipalities on, on land use and zoning issues, which is, which is a no-no for CML. We're home rule, and we make our own land use decisions, but, so I'm not sure if you knew anything about that bill or not, but it's, it came from us, probably.
I know, yeah. Brandy's, Brandy's been, my colleague Brandy's been working on that issue quite a bit, and I know it's given, been a source of consternation for the past month. And it's, it's just, yeah, it's a local control issue, and it goes to the heart of really a municipality's ability to have oversight over, you know, local land use and zoning ordinances, and really shouldn't involve the state at all. And so I think we're just kind of fundamentally in disagreement. The last time I heard, I think they were looking at trying to work on some stakeholder meetings during the interim to see if they can't iron out any of those differences. But it sounded like we're But it sounded like we're just, um, kinda, you know, philosophically opposed, uh, to having any kind of statewide standard. Um, it's great that it worked in Wheat Ridge, but we wanna make sure every municipality has the exact same opportunity to be able to look at these types of things and then make decisions that are based on the long-term goals and, and values of their own communities, so.
Now, I was, I'm sorry, go ahead, Morgan.
Sorry, I didn't interrupt you. I was gonna say, it's up in the committee tomorrow.
Oh, it is. Oh, it is still going. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hoppe?
Yeah, and I just wanna just make sure it's clear that it wasn't really like a, it wasn't a home run in, in Wheat Ridge, really. It was, um, a you, it was an indepen, individual y- use with a lot of restrictions around the amount of time, the time that it could be turned on, um, how high the, how high it could be, the voltage, if it had a fence that had to go in front of it. So, you know, we did work really hard on, on that, and it did end up getting in, but, um, but it wasn't really like a home run. Now you can put up an electric fence anywhere in Wheat Ridge, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Ms. Weaver?
And I would just like to clarify that. I would not be able to put up a, an electric fence even for like animals. So, it is, it is very specific to not residential, right?
The, the bill?
It's every, it's, it's just residential districts except for resi-
Yeah, the bill is all districts except, I believe that's how it was written, all, um, all zoning districts except residential.
Uh, Ms. Nosler Beck?
Okay. Um, just, I was looking through the CML, um, oppose and support, and the substance use disorder treatment and criminal justice system, it says-
Do you have a number handy on?
I'm sorry, it is HB 201017.
1017, thank you.
Uh-huh. And it just says that, um, the recommendation is, the position is to oppose, and, um, I was just hoping you could explain that a little bit further. Um, and the reason I'm bringing it up here is that in Jefferson County, our county jail is, um, dealing with overcrowding, and we've had to shut down a floor. And so, um, anything that helps people not have to go back into the system, which just by the title of that is about a lot of that, um, impacts us here in Wheat Ridge, so.
Yeah. I, I can't speak to the bill. That's, uh, Megan Dollar, um, who is gonna be here tonight, actually. Is, that's her, that issue falls under her purview. But I'd be happy to have her follow up with you, and she could explain the rationale behind that.
Yeah, that would be great.
I, I don't know the details in the bill, and I don't wanna speak out of turn, cause I, I just don't know, so.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, uh, this is, seems like a relatively minor bill, but definitely caught my attention. Um, Senate Bill 2092 on robotic delivery de- devices. I feel like, you know, I'm, we're always paying attention to infrastructure and education and, and, you know, human and social services, but I'm really curious if, if that is still alive and what's going on with it, because, um, that, you know, the future's always already here. And I know as soon as, uh, robotic deliveries start, I'm sure our neighbors would be very interested in what's going on with that. So, thank you.
Yeah, um, so that bill, uh, they ended up, um, uh, the Senator Jeff Bridges, uh, Senate Bill 92, correct? Yeah, uh, he en- ended up peeing his own bill. He brought, um, forwarded the bill on behalf of FedEx, um, and they wanted to start a pilot program down in Denver. So, what the bill would do is just basically create a general regulatory framework for robotic delivery devices, um, which we don't have any problem with, uh, or didn't have any problem with at all, uh, except for the local control aspects of it. They said, and it stated, local governments can, um, regulate these, um, but then they go on to, and preempt them in just about everywhere, you know, any possible way that you could regulate them, time, place, and manner. Uh, and if you look at, um, kind of the way that, uh, as far as transportation issues are concerned, um, you know, it's i- i- issue of statewide concern, but, uh, local governments really do have a lot of discretion and authority on, um, uh, how they regulate their pedestrian right-of-ways. Um, and, uh, this bill would have completely preempted them from doing so. And so, that's why we were opposed and less amended. We were working with the proponents of the bill to try and figure out, um, uh, you know, some amendments, uh, that would get us to neutral. But, uh, we, we weren't there yet, and then they started also having, um, some union issues as well. Uh, and so, they just realized that there was just too much opposition, and they decided to P.I. their own bill. So, that's kind of, that's kinda what happened. But you take, I mean, we could, like, the 16th Street Mo- Mall, for example, just, it's a good example, cause everybody knows it. But you have large density population traffic there all the time, and for that reason, you don't allow the electric scooters, and you don't allow the bikes, and bikes on the pedestrian sidewalks on the 16th Street Mall for good reason, right? They're trying to avoid accidents. This would have required those robotic delivery devices to be able to have access to the 16th Street Mall, um, at any time of day, uh, going at a, at a, you know, at a maximum speed of 12 miles per hour. Uh, and it's, because these haven't been deployed in any reasonable, um, way, uh, we were very nervous that they could be deployed, and you start having a lot of these, um, conflicts with other pedestrians and everything else, and it just, we, we wanted to make sure that local governments and, and city councils, uh, across the state would be able to have some authority and some discretion on dealing with them. So, that was the reason.
Some additional questions? Mr. Goff?
Yeah, if you didn't have anything, we do have some staff, um, here that may have some, um, questions or, or, um, bills that they'd like to talk about. I know, um, Chief Murtha, I don't know if you wanna talk about the encryption bill on, um, Colin, or, um, Morgan, not sure if you know much about that bill or not, but ma- maybe you wanna give council, um, a little bit of heads up on what that bill is?
Chief, come on up and find a, find a seat over here, and, uh, I'll let you get into the fray on your first month in office.
I appreciate it.
Just to introduce you, this is Chief Murtha, our new, uh, police chief.
That, is that your bill? That's not your bill, is it?
It's not. I just know that it would allow the media ha, to have access to unencrypted, um, radio devices, and we've opposed this bill in the past, and I, we continue to oppose it just for public safety reasons.
Yep. Uh, House Bill 201282, uh, is the bill, uh, in question. Um, I guess Senate sponsorship was none, but the, uh, the bill essentially, um, outlines a plan by which, um, public safety or governmental agencies that, uh, intend to encrypt their radio would have to make provisions for, uh, the media to have public access, and potentially for the public to have an alternate access method. Uh, the reason for encryption is not just for the protection of the police officers out there, and, uh, in certain instances, the transmission of their movements and critical incidents, the transmission of their locations, which, uh, obviously, uh, is of paramount importance in, in certain situations. Um, but it's also to protect the victims, uh, the suspects, witnesses, because often those names are transmitted over the radio, and, um, the availability of, uh, those names, uh, to folks who have radio, our radio channel, and then the subsequent, uh, dissemination of that information on social media and other, um, outlets creates a problem for those folks, as you can readily imagine. Um, in my former job, that was an issue that was, uh, ongoing all the time, because we had certain folks who were following us and constantly giving out information before we were prepared to give it out, uh, before it was, actually before it was often validated. So, we spent a lot of time correcting misinformation, and I foresee the same problems here. In the bill, uh, inherently, it puts the onus of the burden to supply either a radio or transmission methods on the, uh, the agency itself, and that would, uh, obviously be an expensive, uh, burden for this agency to, to undertake. So, um, certainly, we're, we're interested in encrypting the Wheat Ridge radio, which is currently not encrypted at this moment in time, and it wasn't encrypted in my conversations with, uh, former Chief Brennan, because we wanna have a transparent agency. But weighing that against, uh, the safety and the protection of our citizens, uh, we, we feel very strongly that encryption, uh, is the way to go. Most agencies are encrypted. We would be one of the last agencies to do that, so.
Thank you.
Do you know if the bill has any legs, where it's at, or?
I don't, I don't think so.
I haven't heard much about it, but if you have any ideas or suggestions as to what would make you feel comfortable with that bill, because, I mean, it will be heard. I'm happy to, to take those. If you wanna email them to me.
Sure.
I know the sponsor, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I'll, I'll take my advantage of that.
Thanks.
What I got, just in my notes from, uh, Brandy, is that we expect it to die on Wednesday. Uh, it should be up, so.
Yep. I know it's, uh, been up in the past, and it's, it hasn't, uh, hasn't had much legs to get through, correct?
Yeah, and we always have law enforcement there in full force, ready to-
I think you-
Talk about how bad of an idea it actually is.
You can expect that again. Chief, you said there was a, a little bit of a cost for the city to encrypt or- Well, no, the, the, to, to encrypt, we're allowed one reprogramming a year, so there's really no call, and no major costs associated with encrypting the, the Wheat Ridge, uh, portion of the Jeffco 911 radio system. Um, but the, uh, the cost would be if we had to supply, uh, encrypted radios to the media, or if we had to, um, create a, an internet channel on a delayed, uh, timeframe for the, for folks to be able to review our work. Again, we would have to spend time and money to redact the witnesses and victims' names out of any of those transmissions anyway. It would be very time-consuming, almost as much as our, as some of our other, uh, technological, um, features, such as body-worn cameras are taken right now. So, it would be a cost burden for the department and the, and the city.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you. Um, I haven't checked on the status of this in a while, but I, wasn't there like a paid family leave bill that was moving forward? I know that that was, um, something I'd been paying attention to and haven't recently.
Mr. Ann?
Thank you so much. Um, they are continuing to work on that. I was on that bill and had removed my name off of that bill, um, just a week ago, actually. And the main reason was I didn't feel that the direction the bill was going, um, was really focusing on our most vulnerable, the ones who really need to have this, uh, this plan. And I kinda feel like, uh, that wasn't, uh, being done, and had in-depth conversations, um, with all the sponsors at that time I made that decision. But I am helping behind the scenes. So, uh, a bill is coming, and right now, they are working to address the concerns that I've had, and the other sponsor from the Senate had, and really trying to, to move forward with the bill that, um, you know, it's gonna be a fine line, right, in the sand, of how do we make sure that we, uh, look at small businesses to see how this impacts them, and then also how it's gonna impact those who are working to increase jobs, and our seasonal workers, to make sure that they have something if they ever have in a, a family emergency, an illness, or, um, even, um, needing to take safe leave. So, they're still working on it. I'm not sure if they'll introduce it this week. I think they're working on the draft now, but I know it will be, uh, coming soon.
Thank you for that update. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, we've invited Judge Randall to the, to the, the bench. And, uh, Judge, do you have some, uh, some legislation that you're interested in?
Well, just very quick, just some observations. Good evening to all. I'm the presiding judge and the department director for the court. Kudos to CML and a group of judges that testified against the 72-hour grace period. My understanding is that's done for the session, so postponed, tabled. Okay.
Yeah, I believe so. I, I can't take credit for it. That's another Megan Dollar one, then, so I do it to her.
Yeah.
I'll let her know.
Megan Dollar and a group of municipal judges testified and provided input against it, and it's been, whatever happens to bills that go away and don't come back, whatever the-
Yeah.
But they know what it is. Uh, basically, what it said is that if you receive a summons, and a summons is mandatory, it's a court order to come to court. You've been charged with something, and it's not a suggestion or a good idea to come to court, this would permit you, so you miss your court date and a warrant is issued. This would give you 72 hours to walk in and get another court date. So, it, it, it kind of, it lacked accountability for people that, uh, would do that, and it didn't have any limit to it. So, it was infinite. You could do it over and over and over. And that was probably my concern with it, that it didn't have, uh, there's no limit on the number of times you could do that. And currently, you can, even if you miss court now, you can request that the judge vacate that warrant, or you can post bond. So, there's, there's already ways that you can take care of a missed court date. Good.
Okay.
That sound, that sound about right, based on what you know about it.
I believe so.
Morgan, and what was the status? You mentioned 1287 on the Colorado Rights Act. Where is that now?
Uh, that bill, I think, is up later this week. Um, and I-
And I think you-
Uh, 1287. Yeah, I think it's up-
I didn't see it on the checklist. I think it's opposed from CML.
Yeah, we're definitely opposed. Um, and I think we have the votes to kill it, um, and I think it's up later this week, but I'm not sure. March 5th.
And then the, the last bill that I saw that I liked, especially if it gives money to municipalities, was 1017, where part of the bill had funding to help with diversion for drug and alcohol treatment. So, I would support that. We certainly can use funds, and we certainly can put that towards good use. So, that piece of it, I would, I think any municipal court-
What was the bill number again?
1017. Then I think you oppose, CML opposes without amendment. What amendment would you like to see to it?
Uh, to 1017?
Yeah.
I don't know the answer.
And sorry to interrupt, but that was the same one that I brought up before.
Yeah.
So, I will, I will, uh, I'll follow up with Megan tomorrow. The criminal justice stuff, I, I don't handle at all, so, but I'll, I'll follow up with her tomorrow, and, and she can follow up and let you know.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure.
And that was it. Thanks.
Easy year on the Hill.
Okay. Additional, um-
No?
Okay. Additional, uh, legislative discussion. We had invited, uh, Senator Danielson. She may be working late tonight, I assume, uh, you know, turning the, letting the, letting the light shine downtown. I wanted to ask, uh, Representative Duran, it's been now, uh, sort of a little over a year that you've been in saddle in this position. What, um, what do you think?
You know, I think, uh, we do a lot of great work. I enjoy it.
For sure.
There we go. Can you hear me now? So, it's a lot of great work. I really enjoy it. I really enjoy collaborating and figuring out how we're gonna get things done. Sometimes it's rather frustrating because we can't, um, but we try. And, um, we just keep trying, and we work together, and, you know, we, we try to listen to our constituents. I try to listen to, to all of you who reach out to me, and, um, I'm always accessible. So, you know, I really, I, I do miss local government also, and kinda being in here and, and doing, you know, the people's work here. But I know I'm doing it up at the Capitol and trying to keep us connected, too, I think is really important. So, I always encourage you and invite you to come when I have a town hall here. I have it here at City Hall. Uh, one Saturday a month, I alternate, you know, between Golden and here. So, I really would like to have, uh, council members come, or one of you come, and just kinda update everyone on what's going on in the city. I think it's really important for them, for them to know. So, just wanna encourage that.
Well, I wanna thank you very much for joining us tonight. Uh, you know, what happens downtown is, is sort of hand in hand with what, what we do here and, and how we approach things. I appreciate your work on our behalf.
Well, thank you.
And, uh, and stay with it. I'm glad it's only 120 days, but I know it's a, I, I know it's a, it's a fast race when you get down there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's my privilege. And if I could say one more thing?
Certainly.
Um, when I pass these out, these are all the bills that have been introduced between the House and the Senate. If you look at it, it'll let you know when they're introduced, what committees they were, and where they are now, as of today. So, um, take a look at that. But, but thank you so much, and I appreciate you having me, and always look forward from hearing from all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Morgan, I wanna thank you for, for coming. Do we have anything else in the legislative arena to go through? All right, well, thank you, thank you very much. And we will, uh, move on to, um, item number two. Who's doing the, who's doing the survey? Is that Marianne? Okay, yeah.
Oh, extension card.
Oh, okay, we're in.
Yep. Mary Ann, hold.
Okay.
Start this up.
Okay. into item number two. This is our draft 2020 resident survey, and Mary Ann Schilling, the Assistant to the City Manager, is here with us. Thank you, Ms. Schilling, for being here, and giving us a little briefing on our draft 2020 resident survey.
All right, yeah, I'm here to talk about the resident survey. This is our biannual resident survey. We last completed this in 2018. The goals of the survey are to assess resident satisfaction with community characteristics and amenities, to evaluate Wheat Ridge local government and employees, and to further understand the residents' priorities regarding government services in Wheat Ridge. The process that this survey goes through is that the residents will first receive a pre-notification letter in early March, they'll get the first round of surveys mid-March, the second round of surveys at the end of March, and then we'll actually have the results by the end of May, and then we'll have someone from the NRC reporting the results of the survey by June or July timeframe. And this should be great timing because it'll be ahead of the budget cycle, so we'll be able to include some of the priorities as we build the 2021 budget. The survey usually stays very similar to year to year in order to track tendencies over time. This year, we did keep the same policy questions, the same as it relates to ADUs and homelessness. We did edit a little bit of the sustainability questions, just to be more specific and a little bit more actionable this year. So really, the primary consideration for the 2020 survey that staff would like feedback on is to see if council would like to add two questions regarding the NRS that may be useful for the upcoming neighborhood engagement strategy. The first of which is to ask, "One of the primary findings that came out of the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy process was that residents wanted the city to focus on the reinvestment of commercial corridors. Identify your top three priorities for commercial corridor reinvestment." And there's a list of several options. And then the second is, "A second primary finding that came out of the NRS process was that residents wanted the city to focus on its neighborhoods. Thinking about your neighborhood, identify your top five priorities." So the survey is typically about five to seven pages. Right now, with these questions, it'd be right at the edge of seven pages, so just keep that in mind as we have a discussion. If you want to add additional questions, you may have to remove additional questions after that, if you do want to keep it at the seven-page length. And then finally, Lori Urban, who works for the National Research Center, usually does come to speak to the statistical significance of this survey. So I'll do my best to answer any questions you may have related to that, but if I can't, I'll reach out to her, and I'll give that answer for you right away. So that is our 2020 resident survey update, and I would just open it up for discussion and feedback on the NRS questions.
Thank you. Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The NRS questions, having spent last year asking these questions of our community already, I'm curious, I mean, it's basically data that we asked last year and heard back from our community on, and I feel like that the responses we got informed the NRS recommendations that we have in place. And I'm just wondering what the city would do with the new data, how that would be different than the data that we got last year. And then I have a follow-up question after that.
Yeah, you know, this would be a scientific process, so I think you could generalize these results to the whole community, as in the NRS process wasn't necessarily scientific. Doesn't mean it's, it was bad data. You know, what you had, I think, over, are you talking about the specific survey that the NRS committee put out, or just your discussion in meetings with the different folks?
Yeah, I mean, these questions were asked several different times.
Yeah, several different ways, yeah. I think it's just another data point that can be used. We are, and Ken maybe could speak to this, we have our new senior planner on, Jeff Hurt, who is leading implementation of this process, and we discussed these questions with him on what maybe additional data he would like, that, you know, we could use this data once they get out in the field to dig deeper on exactly what folks meant by these priorities that they provided to us. Just, it's just another data point. I think that could be used as part of the NRS implementation process. Ken, did you have anything maybe you want to add to that? And, you know, honestly, I kind of drafted these up at the very last minute to just provide an example that council may want to consider. We don't have to use them, so I maybe kind of forgot that maybe we had some rich data on this already, because, you know, this specific data doesn't necessarily show up in the final report on what people want when they talk about what they want in their neighborhoods. I know maybe that you heard a lot about that in your discussions and such, but there really wasn't specific recommendations in the report that said that neighborhoods want more sidewalks, or neighborhoods want more trees, or beautification, or they want more process to be involved in the process. So that was just kind of our thought process.
And Ken, before you start, maybe I could just add a little bit that might be helpful. So when I look at specifically the second question, it's fairly programmatic things you're talking about. Some of them are more infrastructure. But with the recommendation, the specific recommendation that came out around community engagement, and it's my understanding that the city this year will be moving forward with a community engagement tour at the neighborhood level to try and better understand what those neighborhoods want. So these questions were asked to kind of get people to think about their neighborhoods, but to actually ask these specific questions in this context maybe isn't as helpful as coming up with a question that's more outcome-oriented to the engagement tour itself. So what type of issues or, you know, topics would the engagement tour, you know, serve the community by including? Instead of these like solution and strategy-oriented things, rather say, you know, what are the things in your neighborhood that, you know, the topics, not the solutions, but the topics that would be helpful to talk about? Thanks.
Topics of issues, you're thinking, like what?
Yeah, I mean, like...
Give us an example, could you?
Code enforcement or, you know, development issues. I mean, what we got out of the NRS, Sven, Cory and I get gray hairs when we talk about this. They're beloved gray hairs. But what we heard at the neighborhood level was that there's uniqueness within neighborhoods, and that, and having these conversations is asking a citywide question about grant programs or street lighting or tree canopies actually kind of is in contradiction with what the NRS said, which is we want to know at the neighborhood level, how important is your tree canopy? And I understand from a budgeting standpoint, if you're looking at programmatic dollars that are available in 2021, you know, do we need to have a, you know, a tree program, or, you know, what does neighborhood events look like? And that is definitely good for citywide, but that was not really what the NRS said. The NRS said, "We need to understand at the neighborhood level kind of what that looks like." So maybe this question is pertinent, but it's not, it's not what I read out of the NRS recommendation.
Ms. Hoppe?
Well, I believe that these questions, the data can be recorded via district, and so the, like, this specific question says, "Thinking about your neighborhood, identify your top five priorities," and then the data can be broken down by district. So you could really get some district data. District one identified these as their top five priorities. District two, you know, three, four. And so, and I think that that information would be helpful for the, for the new neighborhood strategy people, employees.
Engagement specialists.
Engagement specialists, thank you. I think it would be helpful for them to know, hey, I'm going into District one, this is, this is what we've heard are the top five, and then we can break it down, get it more, you know, into the dirt at that point with that district instead of kind of starting from the beginning with everybody. They would kind of have some priorities that that district was identifying in the survey.
Mr. Stites?
I had an opinion, and I might have just changed it, so hold on. You said that if we added questions to the survey, we might have to bump the pages. Would these questions be included in the seven pages? These two extra, okay. So I agree with Ms. Hulteen that having at least one question on corridors and citywide makes sense, but possibly making the second question a little bit more open to how we want the, or how maybe the citizens want the neighborhood engagement tour to go, or the different types of topics that that neighborhood engagement specialist might want to ask through that. So that might, but Councilwoman Hoppe might have changed my mind on that because we can break that data down into districts, but we can't necessarily break it down into neighborhoods, which is a little bit different according to the NRS, too. So that's something to think about, that maybe we should, if we do two questions with the NRS, one, citywide makes sense, but then bringing it down to really what the NRS was about, which, or what a lot of people came out of the NRS was, giving the neighborhoods more of a say. And so asking a citywide question about neighborhoods kind of does fly in the face of those findings. So if there's a way maybe to ask certain questions, and I'm not sure how to phrase it right now in the moment, but coming up with a way to ask how that neighborhood engagement tour might work out, or what types of things, code enforcement, what types of issues might come up in those neighborhood engagement meetings, might make more sense.
Okay. Thank you. Ken?
Yeah, just maybe to get, I think, I feel like we're kind of all on the same page, maybe just coming at it from a slightly different perspective, because I think I agree with everything that the three councilpersons have stated. You know, we have Jeff Hurt, our new senior neighborhood planner, actively working on developing this program. We hope to, we're interviewing in March for the second position. I hope to have that filled, you know, early to mid-April, and then hope to roll out the program really in the summer at a neighborhood level. And the intent of these two questions was really to, number one, it's more scientific data. Number two, it is, as Ms. Hoppe notes, it's broken out by district, which starts to inform what are the topics that people want to talk about when we go out into those districts, even though, if those are larger scale than the neighborhoods that we might be actually reaching out to. But it's a starting point, because the overall arching, the overarching theme of the engagement program is that we, I think, Ms. Dozman was one to say, you know, we don't want to stop getting things done, right? And others have said that as well. So we're trying to have some informed questions while at the same time having a pretty open engagement of what do you want to talk about? But that's, that was really the intent of this, is to say, so when you talk about neighborhood engagement in whatever the neighborhood is, does that mean neighborhood events? Does it mean you want more neighborhood-based services, like dry cleaners or hair salons? Does it mean that you want us to help you on a branding program? So just think, as Mr. Stites said, I think maybe just to inform, you know, we, this is an open engagement, but, you know, what we heard in our citizen survey, which just wrapped up like a month before we're going out to the public, is that in this district at least, that these were the three or four or five things that might start that conversation and then let it go where it might. So if the lists aren't right, you know, we can talk about that, but that was certainly the intent.
I'd also like to add that another perspective is that this may become a longitudinal portion of the survey, and so similar to ADUs, it's something that was included in 2018, and now we can get a difference in feedback for the 2020. So there may be something to consider in terms of change over time as we do this engagement survey. So that may change the question, it may change the types of answers, but it may also be useful information over time that the NRS isn't going to be able to provide.
Ms. Dozman?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Could you maybe speak to the process of how the households are chosen to receive the survey and how that is representative demographically of our community?
I wrote this down because it was asked last time. So what happens is that they're randomly selected, but there is weighted heavier in multifamily because what we're finding is that multifamily, they typically respond less, so they'll get a little bit more. They'll have, you know, there's certain households that typically respond more frequently, and so they do weight it with the randomization so that it is representative of the city of Wheat Ridge's in its totality.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. The way that the random process is, we have four districts, two council people for each district. You're going to send out 4,500 surveys?
Yes, so it'll be equally represented in each district.
1,125 in each district. How many surveys have already been done?
This year?
By the Wheat Ridge, by Wheat Ridge.
And are you talking about how much has been surveyed?
Surveys, period. How many surveys has the city sent out to residents?
I think 2008 was the first one when I got going again, when I started here. They may have done some in the history of Wheat Ridge, but 2008 was when we started this process, where we do it every other year.
Because I've never gotten one, and I do know I hear from people who have received, you know, more than one, two, three. So the random thing, I don't understand how that is where some people are getting, you know, over and over, and other people aren't getting them at all.
I couldn't speak to that, but I do know that we send them all of the addresses. They use the USPS address, and they, we have working with our GIS to make sure that the mapping's accurate, and so they are randomly sending it out. We've only sent out, I want to say, if we started in 2008, I think it was every three years. Now it's more recently become every two years, so there hasn't been, there's only been five or six in total. So I can ask the NRS if they can provide more information on the randomization, if that would be helpful, or not the NRS, sorry, the NRC.
Yeah.
The National Research Center.
Okay, that'd be good. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe?
Yeah, I just want to go back real fast to the policy questions to be added. So it sounds like we all, you know, agree that there needs to be something that talks about, like, what types of issues should the neighborhood engagement tour address? And so, and this is something that can be wordsmithed, and it can be wordsmithed by the actual survey writers, if we can give them enough idea of how we want that question to look. But I, so I guess my question is, first off, like, do we want these two questions in our survey? And we should start there, and if we do, then maybe we should start working on giving staff some direction on how we want, it sounds to me like everyone who's talked about it is okay with question one, but how do we want, like, the question two? Do, what do we want it to include? So I guess I would just say, do you agree in having the NRS questions in the survey? And if so, then let's try to get some direction. We don't specifically have to wordsmith it to the period tonight, but let's get some information over to staff so they can start working on drafting that for us.
And we did send, we did send this language to NRC, just in game of heads up, we're going to discuss it with council. They said they'd be ready if they did, if we, staff gets direction, they'll help us wordsmith it. But, yeah, and that's why we didn't include these in the draft survey, because we weren't sure what council's priorities are for this survey. And if there's other topics, too, we could definitely talk about that, so.
Ms. Weaver?
I'm certainly fine with addressing these two issues, and like Ms. Hoppe said, thinking about how others could wordsmith these. You did mention that we should not go over four pages, probably because that's going to be a cost issue. So seven, excuse me.
Less of a cost issue, that more of a fatigue issue. People stopped doing after pages...
Sure, okay. So are these two questions, can they be fit on the seven pages? Okay, so it's not an either or, it's both could, okay. But if we went over two questions, then we would start dealing with that issue. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like the idea that one of the questions could be longitudinal, and I think if we're going to do that, I'm really focused on the second one, because I just feel like it's a lot of options, and there's, like, I don't know the different, and I'm not wordsmithing Councilwoman Hoppe, but, you know, what's the difference between neighborhood events and block parties? I mean, but I look at this, and it seems like people have, like, the issues in their neighborhoods that they feel, and I learned this when I was campaigning, is that, you know, there's certain topical issues and less programmatic things they'd like to see happen. So maybe that could be revisited and looked at at a higher level around code enforcement, neighborhood safety, you know, just kind of maybe a couple of larger issues that we're not asking them to think about citywide, but scale it to their neighborhood. And I would really love to see that crafted as a longitudinal benchmark or barometer that we could use for the NRS every couple of years. So I'm really excited at that prospect. So I think... So I think the less programmatic and the more topical it is, I think the better that will serve benchmarks to see how we're succeeding in those things, and can maybe better inform, you know, programs and budgets in the future, so. And just a quick typo, it's, you have identity, your top five priorities, instead of identify in question two.
While you're on the roll, though, Ms. Hulteen, do you have a couple other examples of topical rather than programmatic, just to give us, code enforcement, neighborhood safety, I think that's, what else?
Buckle up, no. So I think it's, I mean, things I heard, and I'm sure all of us know our districts, but, you know, neighborhood safety, both from like a crime, but also from, you know, like, everyone feels like their streets aren't safe, you know, this, like, cars are too fast, so.
Traffic.
So traffic, safety, code enforcement, development. So I think those are just like a quick four. And I think if we could come up with probably, there's probably like seven to eight categories, and maybe asking them to pick their top three would, you know, you guys are, I'm not going to get in that level, but I think there's probably seven to eight categories that asking people to think about their top three would be really helpful. And then I think that data would help our neighborhood engagement specialist and our neighborhood planner to better understand, you know, we can use that data at the district level, but then also at the citywide level, for seeing alignment across all of the districts.
Ms. Weaver.
I was just going to say, maybe in the districts, because I know that, like Cory and I can think of four in our district, and each district might, that crossover might create the eight or so words of.
Wisdom.
Wisdom, thank you.
Right, like, and fill, and like, local businesses, or something.
Right, because they are contextual and dependent on the district.
So should we, councilors, send our list to you of things we think we've heard? And you guys can look at them categorically? Okay. Ken, does that work with what you're thinking on this? I don't want to not have this question serve you, because it-
Yes, no, I mean, I made several notes just based on the comments I've heard already, so I think we can fine tune it, we can take more input from you, and then we can hand it off to NRC to get to the finish line.
Did you have something?
Go ahead.
Mr. Stites? If we added that third question, would it still fit on seven pages, or pretty close, or?
I think this would be in replace, in place of the second question.
That's fine.
Everybody was okay with the first question, the most part?
Yeah, sort of reworking the second question, I think is where we were, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Additional discussion on the biannual survey. Always an interesting tool when we get it back from our citizens. Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you again. I have just a quick clarification when I was reading it. There's a question D14, excuse me, one of my favorite questions. Did you vote in the last election? And were you just, are you just generally looking for voter activity, or did you want that to be the last local election? Does it matter? I don't have a preference, I just, when I read that, I was-
Is that in the demographic section, last page?
Yeah, it's the very last question.
Last question, oh, did you vote?
D14, yeah.
I can't remember the history on that. If that's something we added, or if that was in every, well, I have the information here, if that was, and we went back to 2004, was actually the first survey we did. I don't know if that's a standard, a standard NRC question, or if a previous council asked to put that question in there, I honestly don't remember. I think it might have been, you could do some cross tabs, like, to see, you know, what they're saying about other things, and they never vote, and, but they're, you know, maybe they're complaining about a lot of things, but they don't vote, so, I mean, you can, I guess you can look at it that way. I'm sorry, I don't know the history of that question, but.
And would it, I just saw this, and I'm looking at Councilwoman Weaver, please indicate the number of dogs and cats in your household. This is Wheat Ridge, can we ask about chickens and goats?
We could, sure.
Yeah.
Expand it to.
It'll probably drive it to another page, so.
I think, actually, I'm not being completely facetious with that question, because I think it is a barometer of our agricultural heritage, and we're seeing a lot of families move in and adopt these urban agricultural practices. So I think it's actually a lifestyle question that is relevant, so, I mean, it's funny, but it's also actually legitimately, I think, useful information.
Okay. You got that, Mary Ann?
Thank you.
Goats and chickens.
Ms. Weaver.
When will this be implemented? I just would like to make sure that it's implemented sort of farther away from the census.
Yeah, Alan, I spoke about that earlier today, and as Mary Ann said, the survey instruments will go out in March, and with, I know, with hoping to have the results back in May, so that we can have a presentation to councils that we have information for budget. But, yeah, the survey is, or the census is April-ish, right? And then, and it ends in July or something is the deadline, so it's pretty much, I mean, I don't know if we can avoid the overlap unless we just skip this year, is the only option.
There's no way to do it later in the year?
You could.
I'm just worried about, statistically, with that much fatigue.
Yeah.
You know, people don't like to do.
Yeah, it could impact that.
Just wanted to say it out loud.
Sure.
Ms. Dozeman.
I was just going to kind of piggyback on the agricultural question. Could we just put C, other, and then they can write it in, like, what animals they have, and the number or something? Because, I mean, if we're going to add goats and chickens, we also have horses, llamas, turkeys, I mean, there's a lot of-
Birds.
Yeah, ducks, bees, yeah. But I also did want to ask, and I'm sorry if you said this earlier, but the survey, as I understand it, it's mailed to you, but there's also a link that you could go and do it online as well. So it can be, you can fill it out on paper and snail mail it back, and then also online, right?
Yes, thank you. It does have, the survey will come with an access code and a URL that is unique to you and your survey, so nobody else can use it, so you can do it online as well. It's not an opt-in survey, so it's not anybody can take it, it's only related to you in the survey that you've been mailed.
Additional discussion on our biannual survey, biennial. Ms. Hoppe.
I just would like to ask staff if they feel like they have gotten the direction, have kind of penciled out the direction from everything. We didn't do a straight out, do you can, the consensus, but I just want to see if everybody is feeling comfortable and has a consensus on the discussion we just had in staff following direction on that.
And before we conclude, just to make sure council understands, we are sticking with the increase in the number of surveys that we're distributing last year, or two years ago, city council asked to increase it from 3,500 to 45, or three to 3,000.
3,000 to 4,500.
To send out more, 4,500, so that maybe there's a better opportunity for more people to get it. Doesn't change the margin of error all that much, but more people may get an opportunity to actually get the survey.
Do you mind, just a reminder, how many households do we have in Wheat Ridge? It's like 11,000, 12,000?
Ish, yeah, in that range.
All right, so this is reaching, okay, so we're reaching about 40% of the households? Okay, all right, that's impressive.
Okay, additional discussion? I saw several thumbs go up when, Ms. Hutchinson.
I have a question about sending out the surveys. Does it have the people's names on it when the survey comes out and it's mailed to them? Or is it just resident at the address?
I actually don't know.
It's just resident.
You sound like you've done it.
Because I happened to receive one two years ago, and it was just to the resident of, and it said the address.
Okay, because if it says resident and the address, then that's an example where two people at the same house are getting, you know, a survey, so, or have gotten a-
And the survey methodology, though, is, and it asks, it'll say this on the survey, if there's multiple people in the house, it asks for the person that had the birthday, the most recent birthday in the household, I think is the question. Whoever had the birthday the most recently fills the survey out, so that's another randomization tool that they use. So it's not everybody in the household completes it, they could work on it together, I guess, but that's up to them, but only one person in the household's supposed to complete it.
Right, and it's only one code, so it's not, yeah, so you get sent like a specific code that you have to go and input online, and so it is only one per household, so that's, it's not per person, it's a household.
Okay. Additional discussion? All right, well, thank you very much. Hopefully you have your marching orders in good shape.
Yeah, we do, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, that was a good discussion. That concludes our business portion of our study session, but we're not done yet. We will go to number three for staff reports. Mr. Goff.
Sure, yeah, a quick update for council. The mayor and I met today with other city managers across the Jefferson County and the other mayors, to talk about the budget, what was that, Jefferson County? And specifically the issue with the jail. And as you know, they are having budget cuts, and they did have closed the seventh floor of the jail, and are potentially getting close to closing the sixth floor. So inmates are being released early, and there's going to be a potential time where we're not going to have anywhere to take inmates, or, what do we call them? What do we call these?
Arrestees.
Arrestees, detainees. So we had a good meeting today to talk about strategy, and there's a commissioner's municipality breakfast on Thursday that this topic's going to come up, to discuss this with the commissioners, to encourage them to maybe look at other options in their county budget, to make sure that public safety is the number one priority for them, and making sure that our officers who are on the street have somewhere to take these folks if they need to. So hopefully, we'll know more after Thursday.
Working on that as a solution, so. Okay. Is that it for your staff report?
That is, thank you.
Oh, well, then we will go to elected officials matters. Ms. Hoppe.
Council, you received the survey that will help guide our discussion on our upcoming retreat, and it is due on the sixth, so please try to spend some time on that this week and get it turned in. Thank you.
Additional public officials' reports. Ms. Dozeman.
It's not a report, but with Councilmember Urban having started a trend, I just want to wish my father, Steve Dozeman, a happy birthday today. I would not be able to do what I do in the community without his help. Being a single mom and having two boys is really challenging, and it takes a village, so my parents and primarily my father help out, so I just want to wish him a happy birthday, and I hope you had a great day. Love you.
Thank you. Additional official reports. Ms. Noslerak.
I just wanted to say thanks to everybody who showed up for the St. Peter and Paul Gala on Saturday night. It was a huge success, and the entire community was represented, so thank you for being there and showing your support for a school that's doing some really good work. Thanks.
Terrific. Additional officials' reports. Ms. Hulteen.
I'm just excited, because a week from tonight, Councilwoman Dozeman and I will be in Washington, DC at the National Legal City, sorry, it was like legislature, all these L words coming out. So I'm excited to go and learn more about what's happening, you know, at the federal level, and meet more of my peers, and have a good time in DC with some of the team Wheat Ridge. So we'll come back filled with energy and inspiration, so looking forward to it.
Thank you. Additional reports? I've got one, I want to thank the ATAT, Active Transportation Advisory Team. We'll have a read, a ride for reading on March 9th to assemble at the Lutheran campus, and we will be delivering about 700 books over to Wilmore Davis Elementary School. It is, it starts, we will gather at 12:30 next Monday on March 9th, and be at the school at about 1:30. I've been on this ride before, I think Ms. Hulteen's been on the ride before, and maybe several others of you have, but it's a pretty exciting time to show up at the elementary school with tons of books, and the kids get really excited, so. Looking at the weather, I think we've had a pretty good day, so if anyone would like to join us, Lutheran Medical Center, 12 o'clock on Monday the 9th. So any other business to come before our study session? Thank you. We will be here with, missing some of our counselors next week, but we'll have a meeting right here in this room next week, so I hope to see you all then. With that, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.